Very good, if everyone's all set? Yes, okay. I will call the November 1st, 2021 Board Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Dempsey.
Present.
Ms. Fox.
Present.
Ms. Hume.
Present.
Mr. Malloy.
Present.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mrs. Welby.
Mrs. Yanni.
Present.
Ms. Gilmore.
Present.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? May have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Communications to the board, Mrs. Orr?
Yes, executive sessions were held on October 25th, October 29th, October 31st, and this evening to discuss personnel negotiations, real estate, and litigation.
Thank you. Solicitors report, Attorney Audi.
Yes, I have a report this evening.
Thank you.
As you know, there's been a strike called by the Scranton Federation of Teachers, and there's been some questions about whether or not compensation should be upheld during the strike. In particular, the question is whether or not there should be health benefits ceased during the strike, and I'm just going to point out, as I pointed out to this board, that under Act 9543, Pardon's, Sections 101.1006, states compensation during strike, quote, "No public employee shall be entitled to pay or compensation from the public employer for the period engaged in any strike." The question then becomes whether or not health benefits is considered a compensation. I have, as you know, forwarded to the board a number of Commonwealth Court cases which state specifically that the payments clearly constitute, and I'm quoting, "a part of the total pay package of the employees." We believe that they are compensation, as that term is used in Section 1006. Further, there are a number of cases that support that, and finally, a PLRB decision which states very clearly that, therefore, the strike was statutorily obligated under Section 1006 of Para to cease all compensation, including healthcare benefits for the duration of the strike.
Ladies and gentlemen!
So I say this, so the board and the community understands the decision that's been made to withhold health benefits and compensation during the term of the strike. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Audi. Mrs. McTiernan, superintendent's report.
I do have a question on the report.
Pardon me. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, I would like my colleagues to be able to ask questions. Mr. McAndrew, do you have a question, sir?
Yes, so I understand what you read, and I do appreciate that, but why do others, when there are strikes, other school districts don't take away their healthcare? Abington... I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I could be wrong, I believe Abington went on strike a few years ago, and you were the solicitor, and they didn't take away their healthcare.
Thank you for that question, Mr. McAndrew. I could answer that.
Mr. Audi, would you please hold your question and your response until we can hear it? Thank you.
I will answer that. As you know, Mr. McAndrew, the Scranton School District has been under strict scrutiny with the law, right? Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
And would you think that it would make sense for us to follow the law that's specifically set forth that I just read, or should we ignore it and have someone from the community sue us?
I've been just wondering why other districts don't do it like ones you represent.
That would be the reason that we did it, so that we are following the law here, and that we can't be dragged into court and saying that we did not follow the law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you.
Mrs. McTiernan, superintendent's report.
I'll begin when everyone can hear me. Thank you, President Gilmore, and good evening, everyone. I do have several announcements. First, regarding the fight against COVID, since the beginning of its partnership with Hometown Healthcare of NEPA, the Scranton School District has been setting records for school-based immunizations. Over the past 10 months, 3,181 vaccines have been administered at district-sponsored vaccine events. 2,406 of these vaccinations were for COVID-19. Together, Scranton School District and Hometown Healthcare have immunized community members, staff, and eligible students. This week, the CDC will approve the COVID-19 vaccine for elementary-age children. Scranton School District is sponsoring one of the first vaccine events in the area for pediatric Pfizer vaccines this Friday at Scranton High School. All children aged five years and older are eligible. Just like past events, vaccinations will be provided without cost to the recipient, including those who are uninsured. SSD continues to put the health and safety of its students at the forefront of its mission. Thank you to Hometown Healthcare of NEPA for all that you do for SSD. Next are a few items to discuss pertaining to the impending strike and questions that I have been asked and would like to answer publicly. The first day of the strike is November 3rd. There will be no school for students during the strike. When would school restart? School would not begin until the strike ends. Regardless of when school restarts after a strike, our students will receive 180 days of instruction. School closures caused by a strike are similar to weather-related closures. Days must be made up. When will lost school days be made up? The district will revise and distribute a new school calendar as soon as possible after the strike ends. How will a strike impact seniors? Graduation, depending on the duration of the strike, the date of the graduation ceremony may need to change. The school and district will notify families as soon as possible after the strike if a change is needed. The change will also appear on the revised calendar. What kind of options are there in the community for childcare during the day? The district will post a list of daycares and community-based organizations that may provide some options for parents. How will a new student enroll in a Scranton school if schools are closed? The district administration building will remain open during a strike, and parents may register students to any of our district schools at the administration building. The administration, again, is located at 425 North Washington Avenue. Will this affect the Scranton Cyber Academy? The Cyber Academy teachers are members of the Scranton Federation of Teachers. This will suspend the operations of the Cyber Academy during the strike. How will a strike affect special education programs? Special education will not be held in the district. If our students attend a special education program outside of the district, they should attend their out-of-district school as they would any other day. No home-bound or in-home instruction will be provided. What about students that attend the Career Technology Center and Center for Independent Living? SSD students that attend both of these programs will attend those programs daily. Will students have access to breakfast and lunch program? Students will have access to breakfast and lunch at no cost through the extension of the Summer Food Service Program. We will be distributing the food at the following locations during the strike: Whittier Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, Armstrong Elementary, Prescott Elementary, Tripp Elementary, Western Intermediate, and Scranton High School. This week, we will distribute the food on Wednesday, November 3rd, from 11:00 to 1:00. Following this week's distribution will take place from 11:00 to 1:00 every Tuesday and Thursday until students return to school. On Tuesday, students can receive two days of breakfast and two days of lunch. Each Thursday, students can receive three days of breakfast and three days of lunch. And that is some information, and parents, if there's more questions, please email me, and I'm happy to get you those answers. The next question, again, is I have received some information regarding an FAQ that was on PDE's FAQ that I want to share, because I was asked this question regarding ESER funds, and I want to make sure that I say this publicly. The question's asked, "May ESER funds be used to pay school employee bonuses, back pay, or additional compensation where such payments or liabilities do not prevent, result from, prepare for, nor respond to the COVID-19 pandemic?" The answer, on PDE's website, "The use of ESER funds, including ARP ESER funds, must be directly related to pandemic-driven needs, as the overarching purpose of ESER I, ESER II, and ARP ESER funds are to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Payments such as those described above are not permissible uses of ESER funds." Finally, I will state, I appreciate everything paraprofessionals and teachers do. The Scranton... The Scranton School District CRO, District Administration, and School Board remain committed to settling a contract that is both fair, affordable, and sustainable with both our teachers and paraprofessionals, and we are eager and ready to... and we are eager and ready to continue negotiating to settle both contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have a report from our student representatives. Jeannie, Tyler.
When I was first given this position, one of the major things I wanted to focus on were the positive activities that come out of the district. Each month, so many positive and exciting activities happen that go nearly unnoticed. During the month of October, Scranton Show Choir won a high school choir contest held by Rock 107. They were awarded the opportunity to be featured at the concert of the rock band Foreigner, which was held at the FM Kirby Center. The group submitted a rendition of the hit song, "I Want to Know What Love Is," which later the choir heard back that they had won the contest. On Friday, October 22nd, the choir performed their ballad for the crowd right before Foreigner took stage. In other news, West Scranton Intermediate students are currently working on Patriots pen essays. This essay contest encourages young minds to examine America's history, along with their own experiences in modern American society, by drafting a 300-to-400-word essay expressing their views based on the patriotic theme chosen. This year's theme is "How Can I Be a Good American?" With so many great things happening with our students, I look forward to bringing many updates to next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Community service is very important. It does not only benefit the community, but it benefits the students who participate. The Community Service Club has a mission to benefit both West Scranton and greater Scranton communities through volunteering its time and its talents to charitable causes. The goal of this club is to inspire students to be productive, lifelong community service leaders by encouraging a commitment to civic participation. Some events the Community Service Club participates in are volunteering at the Lackawanna Heritage River Trail Cleanup, the Bonfire at the Furnaces, and Friends of the Poor Thanksgiving Dinner. Another club that helps not only the West Scranton community, but also the greater Scranton community, is the Red Cross Club. There are many different ways people can save lives. One way students can save lives is by joining the Red Cross Club. The mission of the Red Cross Club is to prevent and to alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. The West Scranton Red Cross Club teaches students humanitarian values through mission-related service projects. Some activities the Red Cross Club participates in are honoring the military through Veterans' Day messages sent to current and past military members. The club has collected and sent over 100 items for U.S. soldiers serving in Afghanistan, sending them to a unit of a recent West Scranton graduate. The club also conducted two blood drives, excuse me, two blood drives each year, which consistently exceed blood unit goals and, on average, save 120 lives per blood drive. At this time, I would like to talk about all the great things happening at West Scranton Intermediate School. The 7th and 8th grade girls' basketball team finished its season. They played hard and had a great time. West Scranton Intermediate School had their first Start With Hello Week at the end of September and raised over $600 that was donated to Sandy Hook Promise Foundation. It is great to see all the events happening in the Scranton School District, and I am happy to share them with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you both for being here this evening, I deeply appreciate it. We will now entertain public comment. As always, each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Oh, I apologize, I missed the PSBA report, I'm sorry, Director Dempsey.
PSBA's Virtual Advocacy Day was a success. There were 150 school leaders from across the state who participated in PSBA's Virtual Advocacy Day, held on October 14th. The participants received information from PSBA on key issues surrounding district challenges during the pandemic, and the need for mandate relief and charter school funding reform. PSBA recently presented testimony to the Senate Education Committee in general support of the Pennsylvania Department of Education's proposed regulations for charter and charter cyber schools. The testimony highlighted the following key points. Regarding charter school applications, the PSBA supports language reaffirming the ability of local school boards to either develop and use their own applications for those seeking to open a charter school, or to obtain additional information from charter school applicants needed to evaluate the application. Regarding charter school fiscal management and transparency, the PSBA supports efforts in the regulations to clarify and ensure charter schools are subject to generally accepted standards of fiscal management, and that charter school boards of trustees adhere to the same standards of ethics and transparency that apply to local school boards. Regarding a redirection of payments to charter schools, the proposal includes a timeline for redirection that only gives school districts 10 calendar days to receive an invoice from a charter school, review and verify the charges, and make payment before the charter school could seek a subsidy redirection. PSBA recommends that the timeline be extended and that notice provisions are included to ensure transparency and responsibility in the invoicing and redirection process and the use of taxpayer dollars. The Pennsylvania Department of Education released Volume 10 of its ESER GEAR Extra, a communication to provide information for schools regarding the use of their federal ESER funds and government emergency education relief, the GEAR funds. Volume 10's contents include information about the ARP Act's Maintenance of Equity requirement, additional detail on use of ARP ESER funds to alleviate student transportation strains, information about upcoming ARP ESER webinars, guidance on use of ESER funds for contract tracing efforts, and information regarding the extended availability of the 2019-2020 federal funds due to the U.S. Department of Education waiver. All editions of the communication are archived on PDE's website, if anyone chooses to check those out. The U.S. Department of Education's Office of Special Education and Rehabilitative Services, also known as OSERS, recently released a Q&amp;A titled "The Return to School Roadmap: Development and Implementation of Individualized Education Programs in the Least Restrictive Environment Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act." The new guidance interprets requirements of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, considering the many challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic as schools return to in-person services. Topics include meeting timelines, ensuring implementation of initial evaluation and reevaluation procedures, determining eligibility for special education and related services, and providing the full array of special education and related services that children with disabilities need in order to receive a free, appropriate, public education. The final monthly exchange board leadership discussion will be held November 9th, if anyone is interested. Discussions will resume in January after board reorganizations. That's all I have for November.
Thank you, Director Dempsey. My apologies for overlooking you momentarily. We will now entertain public comment. As always, each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Union officials will be allowed four minutes. Our first speaker this evening is Carol Mellon. I apologize, is it Paul?
Paul.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I was having a little hard time making it out.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Paul Mellon, I'm a taxpayer, a retired teacher from the district, and I have a grandson attending McNichols Plaza, which is a fantastic school. I want to, first of all, mention that you people received $57 million from Washington for the pandemic. I wonder where all that money is? Secondly, you're still getting pre-K funding, and yet we don't have a pre-K program in the district. Where's that money? The next thing is taxes have been increased constantly with major cuts in services, such as closing bankrupt school, the pre-K program, as I mentioned, cutting librarians, related arts, including music and art in other areas, and cutting busing. All these cuts egregiously affect our precious students who are discouraged from reading because they don't have librarians. They're no fans anymore. You're destroying the arts in our schools. Educational research proves that those who excel in the arts are the best students. I refer you to publicschoolreview.com, there's a lot of great research there concerning this topic. I found out that you bought new textbooks, and they're sitting in boxes? Why did you buy them? And as a taxpayer, I have a right to ask you how you couldn't have allowed our phenomenal teachers to go without a contract for five years? They rightly deserved not only to have received a substantial raise, especially with the pandemic nonsense they had to put up with, but they deserve a fair contract as well. This fair contract should have been settled before the last contract expired, with the only change being a raise. As just stated, you have multi-millions of dollars in your coffers. Give them a contract with no strike. My grandson, 9,000 other students are fantastic teachers, and the taxpayers are the only losers in this situation that you created. You created this. I, as a taxpayer, want accountability from this board. Give us, please, an itemized listing of every penny that you spend. Every penny of spending should be itemized, and give the teachers a fair contract immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Our next speaker is Patricia Carr.
Director Gilmore, I'm sad to say I read your op-ed in Sunday Scranton Times newspaper. It's quite obvious you're unaware of how unions and elections work. I voted for my SFT officers to represent me and to host meetings when important information needs to be discussed. Currently, your negotiations are not resulting in much to discuss, especially with the suggestion of ELAP insurance. My doctors that I was able to visit last week at Sloan Kettering do accept Blue Cross, they don't accept ELAP. I've worked for 25 years in the Scranton School District. I've been involved in many different strike actions. I've never lost my health insurance. You've hit a new low. Don't worry, I still have time to cancel appointments, but you've hopefully realized you're hitting a historic, another historic mistake that's happening right now. We like our jobs.
Thank you, Patricia. Jim Connors?
First thing I'd like to say to the teachers, you are the teachers, the custodians of our children. You went to school, you worked hard, you studied hard. Don't lose your courage. Don't give up. You dedicated your life to our children, and don't give up now. Stay strong. Hi, I'm Jim Connors. I am a former mayor, teacher, and former Title I administrator, and I was in charge of that preschool program that this board got rid of and still has not given us a reason. We got, when I left, we were getting $1,200,000 for remedial reading, remedial math, and preschool, and every child in our city was entitled to free preschool, and every parent was entitled to free preschool. I still have not been given a reason why you canceled that program, and there's children this year that would have received preschool. Who is in charge here? Who is taking care of our children? Some of us in this room are making an awful lot of money, and others are barely able to pay their bills. We have the haves, and we have the have-nots. The haves seem to be very happy. The have-nots are behind me, and they're suffering. It is my understanding, as Mel said, there is millions of dollars available to the haves. Why are you not paying our teachers? For God's sakes, these are our teachers. They've given their lives to our children. Most of you, or many of you, are teachers yourselves, don't you remember? These teachers we have contracted with to teach our children, they have worked every... they have worked every day. Pay them, you have the money. They are entitled to it.
Mayor, please wrap up.
One more question. What do you really intend to do with the rest of our schools? Are you going to close, as it says in your plan, five more of our schools? Where are you going to put our children? Are you going to cram them into existing classrooms?
Mayor, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Which are already some of our classrooms, 26 children in a kindergarten. twenty-six children in a kindergarten.
Mayor, I'm going to call the next speaker. I do have to be fair to everyone. You'd like to yield your time?
They can't.
I'm sorry, we're not able to do that. Mayor, please give your remarks to Mrs. Connors. Mayor, I am trying to keep order in this meeting and give everyone an equal amount of time. Mayor, I am asking you, please... Mayor, I am asking you, please...
I'm going to ask that we have order in this room, please. If you don't want order, then we'll just move on. Please, please. Just have some common courtesy and follow the rules. Follow the rules as you teach them, please.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Connors, I am asking you to please allow this meeting to continue. Mayor, Mayor, your time is up, sir. I'm calling the next speaker, Suzy Connors.
All right, I'm Suzy Blom Connors. I am a retired Scranton School District teacher. I taught in the district from nineteen seventy-two to two thousand sixteen, when, I'm sorry, two thousand six, when, for thirty-four years, when it was prestigious to be in this district. Everyone at the time wanted to teach in Scranton. We were considered one of the premier school districts in the area. Unfortunately, that is no longer the case. And I have to first say, the only other time I ever spoke before a school board was in the early eighties, when I was a very young teacher, teaching at James Monroe, they were going to close that school. I spoke to try to keep the school open. It actually worked for about a year. Then that board met on a Friday night in June, and I saw on the eleven o'clock news that the school had been closed, which was an outrage then. And what my husband wanted to say is, if your plan is to close schools, then we need to be told. And do you intend to build large elementary schools? And if so, tell us, these are our children, not yours. It's our district, not yours. I think I still have time. Two and a half years ago, in March of twenty nineteen, I wrote a letter to the editor, which is published in the Scranton Times, which I think is still appropriate. I would like to quickly read it. It starts, "Despite the financial difficulties the Scranton School District finds itself in, the teachers in the trenches go to work every day with one goal, educating the students who are sitting in front of them for an average of six hours a day, five days a week, one hundred eighty days a year. My husband, former Scranton Mayor Jim Connors, and I recently had the opportunity to participate and read across America. In honor of Dr. Seuss at three Scranton Elementary Schools, Kennedy, Adams, and McNichols Plaza, we were both impressed with the quality of education that was taking place. In each classroom that we visited, from kindergarten through fifth grade, the children were well-behaved, engaged, and eager to listen and learn. To those who think that teachers are overpaid and underworked, I challenge you to make a visit to any school in the district and see for yourself what is happening in the various classrooms. I can assure you that you will be pleasantly surprised. And yes, I might be biased because I was an SSD teacher for thirty-four years, but it still pains me that active and retired teachers do not get the respect they so richly deserve, and also that they don't get the compensation that they deserve. And to take away their health care is just outrageous, and just because you're saying it's the law doesn't make it right." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Connors. Breida Cronin Holmes?
Hi, everyone. My name is Breida Cronin Holmes. My husband and I are Scranton residents. Our son, Jack, is in kindergarten, and our daughter, Caitlin, is in second grade. Both are students in this district. You don't know them, but you just cut their health coverage, along with plenty more SSD students whose mom or dad work within the district. I spoke a few months ago about ELAP. You didn't listen to me then, and I don't expect you to listen to me now. But Katie Gilmore's op-ed in Sunday Scranton Times need to be spoken to, and I'm going to do that. She mentioned an alternative offer to continue benefits through Blue Cross Blue Shield. What she failed to mention was that the deductible is astronomical, meaning we would be paying one hundred percent out of pocket for any medical expenses until that deductible was satisfied, which can be thousands and thousands of dollars, depending on the size of your family. Now, this might not resonate with the likes of Dr. Finan, Attorney Audi, or Ms. Gilmore, but to those of us who are making thirty-seven thousand dollars a year with a master's degree as teachers in the Scranton School District, it matters. But that's the problem, isn't it? You are making decisions for teachers and students you know nothing about. Most of you sitting up there either don't have children, have your children in private schools, or you spent the entirety of your own education in private Jesuit schools. You are so disconnected, you don't even realize it. The majority of our children are living beneath the poverty line. They are not shopping at Nada and Company. You are making decisions for a public education system in students you know nothing about, and it shows. Taking their libraries in their preschools is proof of that. The op-ed was insulting to teachers, but we're used to that. One of the most disgusting affronts was to the Scranton community. You are throwing the word "millions" around, thinking you could stupefy our public with big numbers, making teachers look greedy. The Scranton community is not stupid, and they see through you. But since you want to talk numbers, let's talk about the two hundred thousand dollars Dr. Finan is collecting to dismantle Scranton schools. Chump change, considering she raised a payout of over eight hundred thousand dollars for her former district. As a teacher on the front lines who loves my students so much it hurts, who hears their stories and wipes their tears, and listens to their big dreams, I won't see two hundred thousand dollars over five years. But I can rest my head at night knowing the work I do here is good. You cannot do the same. Katie Gilmore has the gall to say, "We, as teachers, are undermining our community's well-being. The only thing undermining our community's well-being is your lack of integrity, your deceit, and your commitment to union busting." It's about the only commitment you have, and whether you believe it or not, we all see it. To come to Scranton and try to deceive us, or worse, to be from Scranton and try to deceive us, is unconscionable. We are not stupid. This is a city built on the backs of unions, and we will see to it that the truth will be told.
Amanda von Firstenberg? I apologize, did I mispronounce your name?
It's Firstenberg.
Firstenberg, oh, thank you.
That's okay. My name is Amanda Firstenberg. To give you a bit of a background, I have a son in sixth grade at Northeast Intermediate, and two daughters, in first and second grade at Neil Armstrong. We're new to the district this year. I am a parent, I am not a teacher, I am not a paraprofessional. To say that I was nervous is an understatement sending my kids to this district. It's bad enough the rep that Scranton has. But I was pleasantly surprised sending my kids to school. They raved about their teachers. They were so happy. My sixth grader loves school again. That little boy used to come home in tears, hating school. And because of his teachers, he loves it again. He comes home with a smile on his face. He wants to do good. He is actively getting up every day and studying. I don't have to tell my eleven-year-old boy anymore that he needs to go and study. It has been truly refreshing. Growing up, I never understood the phrase, "It takes a village to raise a family." But once I became a mom, I knew exactly what it meant. From aunts and uncles to grandparents and doctors and teachers, we need all the help we can get. If you have kids, then you know how hard parenthood is. I'm amazed at how I managed to care for three kids, but I can't imagine being responsible for fifteen, thirty, fifty, hundreds of kids who aren't mine. Over the years, we have asked teachers to become therapists, counselors, computer techs, referees, nurses, and even act as a barrier between our kids and anyone who wants to harm our children. Why we've all had to do some adjusting the past year and a half, we have asked our teachers to come up with creative ways to teach our children through a computer screen. We asked that they learn new computer software, which, if you're not tech savvy like me, is infuriating. We've asked them to relentlessly clean their rooms by teaching and trying to keep children six feet apart. We also threw fits about having them teach our germ-infested, snot-rubbing, coughing-everywhere-but-your-arms children. And we asked them, after teaching all day, they go on Google Classroom and upload all of their classwork for students who miss that day. Something no one talks about as well is how accessible everyone has become because of COVID. There are no more nine-to-five, leave-it-at-work jobs. I've had teachers reply to my messages at ten o'clock at night and on weekends, well after they are off the clock. Time and time again, those teachers have all done what we have asked of them with a smile on their face. We have asked that teachers and administrations teach our children to be team players and not be a bully. Mrs. McTiernan, to get that passive-aggressive phone call announcing the strike was not only disheartening, but disturbing.
Amanda, I have to ask you to wrap up.
It showed just how dysfunctional the administration really is. How can we preach teamwork and being a good person when the higher-ups of this district are doing the exact opposite? As a parent, I want to show my children...
Amanda, I need to ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Amy Petruski?
Good evening. My name is Amy Petruski. I am a graduate of the Scranton School District. I'm proud to say it was fantastic when I went to school there. I'm sad to say it's not right now. I have two honor roll students that attend Scranton High, where they are involved in sports and extracurricular activities. I'm here tonight to let you, in hopes that you let the children of our district participate in their activities while this unfortunate strike occurs. These children have worked very hard and had to overcome a lot due to the pandemic. And the situation the Scranton School District is in is not their fault. My older son is a Scranton High football player, and they are supposed to have their playoff game this Friday. If you vote to stop the activities, this means these kids, especially the seniors, who put their blood, sweat, and tears into the long, hot practices this summer, will not have an opportunity to finish their season. These activities the kids participate in may not mean anything to you, but to them, it means the world. Are you voting on this tonight to make it look like it's the fault of our teachers? It is not our teachers' fault. The parents and the public know this. We love our teachers. One last thing. My two honor roll students are products of the Scranton School District preschool program, where they have a wonderful teacher named Ms. Jody from Prescott Elementary School. One of the things Ms. Jody taught them was to play nice with others. It seems like some people need a refresher course on that. Please let the children participate in their activities and their sports while you work out your issues in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Donna Zaleski?
Hi, my name is Donna Zaleski, and I'm a mother of six children who were taught by many of these dedicated teachers in the Scranton School District. I am a taxpayer and a business owner. I'm a proud member of the SFT, and I am also the kindergarten teacher who contracted COVID along with bilateral pneumonia last month, which was mentioned at last school board meeting, in case some of you didn't hear it. Other teachers have contracted COVID in our district. They were affected by it, some with worse symptoms than others. But regardless of how severe the symptoms were, we are still missing work. I missed eleven days. I'm asking that the board do something about using COVID days instead of our sick days. I didn't understand whatever that was that you were talking about as far as why we can't get these days, but I can't understand why that's not already in place. Other districts do it, and I can't understand why we did not. Don't we matter? Don't the teachers matter? Don't I matter? You know, as a kindergarten teacher, one of the skills we taught, or we tried to instill in our children, is to be a good listener, involving the whole body listening, with our eyes, with our ears, our whole body, and our mind. We even stressed to listen with your heart, to gain a sense of empathy and compassion for what the speaker is saying. Why is this skill so important and expected at age five, but it seems to lose its value as an adult? Sometimes, we also use an attention getter. We'll say, "One, two, three, eyes on me," and the students will respond, "One, two, eyes on you." I sometimes take it a step further and start skip counting. I see two eyes, I see four eyes, six eyes. And if I got to all the students in my classroom, twenty-seven students, that would be fifty-four eyes looking at me. That's a lot of eyes in a room where there's supposed to be social distancing. Wouldn't you agree with that? Twenty-seven five-year-olds is an overload during a normal school year, but during a pandemic, one would think that that number of students jammed into a classroom would be a lot less. Just wondering, how many eyes are looking at me now? During my quarantine, I wasn't able to attend our in-service in person. I watched on a video of Zoom. But the diversity and equality training at Isaac Tripp I was signed up to go to, coordinated by two dedicated teachers, Laura Sasek and my daughter, Julie Zaleski, who I'm very proud of. But they saw a need, and they raised money to make it happen. Instead of being encouraged and appreciative for bringing a necessary and long overdue PD to our teachers, they were met with resistance from the guest... Oh, no, I have to finish. You have to let me, I did this when I was sick.
Donna, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
I will wrap up. So I wasn't able to attend that in-service, but the people who did, they found it to be very... Okay, I've lost my place, I'm so sorry. They found it to be very insightful. Even Mrs. McTiernan and Mr. Gennalesa also found it worth mentioning at last week's board meeting, despite the fact that they raved about the guest speaker and gave no mention to these two teachers who put it all together.
Donna, I have to ask you to wrap up, please. Donna, I have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Don't these two teachers matter? They should. They were doing something to better our district, better our teachers, our students, and our community. Finally, I ask that you stop seeing us as the enemy. We are not. We are all in this together. We have a common goal to make this district a better place where parents want to send their children.
Donna, we have to move on. Thank you for your comments. Paxton Hartman? Hi, girls. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Scranton School Board and administrators. My name is Paxton Hartman. I'm a student at South Scranton Intermediate School. The students in the Scranton School District deserve a quality education. The school district and its teachers are obligated to provide a quality education. If the Scranton School District is not willing to show respect for its teachers and pay them salaries comparable to other districts in Lackawanna County, the district will not attract quality teachers. Therefore, students and their families are not getting an equitable education relative to those in neighboring school districts. The Scranton School District's mismanagement of money and lack of accountability on the administrator's part has led to the current situation in this district. Offering teachers a $500 bonus is not a generous offer. The additional annual increases for the next three years does not apply to those being offered a $500 bonus. That's being generous? There can be no school district without the teachers, and this district is having a difficult time finding teachers who want to work here. True leadership is respecting and taking care of the people who are doing the job.
Thank you, Paxton. Pat Festa?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Festa. I'm a third-grade teacher at McNicholas Plaza School and the second vice president of the Scranton Federation of Teachers. Last week, after the Scranton School Board put out a statement that you were all outraged at the planned strike action of my union, I finally felt, for once, that the teachers, parents, parents, and students, and you finally could agree on something, namely outrage. With one huge exception, Scranton School Board members, your outrage is totally misplaced. Not only is your outrage misplaced, your recovery plan narrative, as you can see tonight, is crumbling by the minute. Your narrative, President Gil Martin, that somehow implies in your op-ed that offers are not being presented to union members is hollow, untrue, and frankly, not your business and where your focus should be as my school district is burning. That is outrageous. Your narratives that somehow, the loss of three-year-old preschool, the loss of music and other critical electives, the loss of special education, paraprofessionals, the closing of our beloved neighborhood schools, the overcrowding of classrooms, the use of non-certified people to teach classes, the lack of any teacher in some classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are proud displays on your part of educational process and recovery? It's beyond infuriating. That's outrageous. Your narrative, your narrative, your narrative that all the past financial mistakes will be solved solely on the backs of teachers, parents, and yes, our students, while raises are given to yourselves and new positions are created? It's suspect, it's cruel, and it's outrageous. Speak all you want. This board, this board cutting health care benefits mid-pandemic is heartless, and it's a first in school district history. And it's personal for me. I'll tell you why it's personal for me. I work with wonderful colleagues at a school called McNicholas Plaza, and one of my colleagues and one of my dear friends is having cancer surgery next week, and she's beside herself, cruel, heartless, and punitive, and it's on you. The recovery plan is what it is. It was a plan authored by an out-of-towner called Dr. Candace Finan, and it's a scam. It has done nothing, nothing, nothing for our kids, not one thing, and it's left teachers and parents frozen in time for five years and leaving by the droves. That is outrageous. You're outraged? No, we're outraged.
Thank you, Mr. Festa. Laura Lenka?
Hi. My name is Laura Lenka. I've been teaching in the Scranton School District for the past 18 years, and tonight I thought it would be important to go over some of the numbers that are important to me rather than the numbers that are important to you. When we're talking about teacher raises, you need to understand that it's not a percent raise or an inflation of our salary schedule. It's movement along the same salary schedule, which has been in place in this district for decades, the salary schedule that I agreed to work under 18 years ago. I am currently frozen on Step 13 in my 18th year of teaching, and here's how those numbers translate for my family. That's the amount of money that I have rightfully worked for and earned that the SSD still refuses to pay me. Do you realize what my family of five can do with that amount of money? Keep in mind, that number's only accurate up to September 1st of this year, but don't worry, I'm still counting. $4,116. That's the measly amount of money that your last, best, and final offer would give back to my family if the SFT accepted that insulting offer. Yet $47,400 is the amount of my earned income that you, the SSD, would keep if I agreed to that contract. $47,400. That's quite the donation you're expecting from my family. So out of curiosity, are there any of you right now that would publicly be willing to donate that amount of money and match my donation to this district? My guess is no. But you still have no problem demanding that from me and everyone sitting behind me. So for any of you that haven't been paying attention so far, the SSD's offer, that's best and final, will give me back roughly 8% of my retroactive pay while they stand to keep the remaining 92% of my earned money. And I'm one example. Every teacher in this room could stand up here behind me and go through their respective numbers one by one, but the pattern would be the same. Does that sound like a compromise to you? Does that sound like district leaders trying to avoid a teacher strike? We are not preparing for a strike because we want one. The action is being forced upon us by adults who try to bully their way to a deal by cutting health insurance to people who need it. So here are some additional numbers. $29,109, the absolute highest amount of money that a paraprofessional in this district could make, even after more than 20 years in this district. That wage is barely livable, yet administrators have been afforded single raises larger than that during the recovery period when there's supposedly no money to go around. So understand this. When I read press releases that make teachers out to be greedy and unreasonable, greedy and unreasonable is balancing your budget and creating a $12 million surplus on money that does not belong to you. We have our own budgets and bills to pay.
Please wrap up, Laura.
You need to understand, one thing everyone in this room can understand, we all need these children to be in school. But we are overworked, underpaid, undervalued, and we're exhausted. So if you really want to avoid a strike, you need to do better. The power to keep these children in the classroom is yours. We have been patient for five years. When over 100 people left...
Laura, please wrap up.
I'm wrapping it up. We stayed. It's time you reward those of us who stuck with this district through the hard times. Don't tell us.
Thank you, Laura. Jen Tlesko? Jen Tlesko? Laura, your time is up. Jen Tlesko?
Good evening. I'm a taxpayer, teacher, proud SFT member, and very proud parent of two children in our Scranton School District. Tonight, I'm speaking as a parent on behalf of the teachers and paraprofessionals that I would be remiss if I didn't thank our former mayor Connors for standing up for our students, teachers, and paraprofessionals tonight. I only wish our current mayor would speak up for our students, teachers, and paraprofessionals. I ask myself, I can't even tell you how many times a day, why I stay in Scranton. Why do we continue to raise our family and send our children to the Scranton School District? Anyone who knows me knows I'm a staunch supporter of public education, but that is not the reason. The reason we stay is because of you. Because of the teachers and paraprofessionals in the Scranton School District, you are the very reason, the only reason, why we stay. I trust you with my children every single day because I know your dedication and worth, even when the Scranton School Board, our Governor Wolf, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and our chief recovery officer, Dr. Finan, collectively spit in your face and point the finger of blame at others. I know how hard you work, how you never stopped thinking, planning, worrying, and problem-solving long after that dismissal bell rings. I'm proud to stand with you every day as a colleague, and as a parent, I cannot thank you enough for standing up for our children when the Scranton School District continues to destroy a public education in Scranton by eliminating our preschool, closing our neighborhood schools, cutting our libraries, and cutting our related arts, furloughing teachers and paraprofessionals, eliminating learning support paraprofessionals, reducing our bus routes so that it's unsafe for our students and putting their safety at risk, and continuing to drive teachers and paraprofessionals out of our district. I thank you for not wavering on your decision to stand up for what is right and equitable for our kids, even after years of disrespect and now, as they strip away your health care because we dare to fight for a fair contract. Their union-busting antics under the guise of a recovery plan are made blatantly clear with each passing day. Thank you for showing our kids what it is like to stand up for those who may not have a voice.
Thank you, ten. Rosemary Bolland?
Good evening, directors. My name is Rosemary Bolland. I'm the president of the Scranton Federation of Teachers, Local 1147 AFT, AFT, Pennsylvania, and I am a regional council member of the AFL-CIO. Greetings. I have been reading a lot recently about your interest in our union. It seems you want to know a lot about it, and you want to learn about our governance procedures for our local. Most of you up there have some kind of college degree. We are short teachers in the Scranton School District. I suggest you take an application out, cover a few classes, and I'll even tell you where to cover them, so you can enjoy the fun all day of maybe getting to go to relieve yourself during your half-hour lunch period. And we'll charge you union dues so that we can represent you when somebody writes you up because some kid is acting up in the hallway where there's no teacher on duty. Why? Because you cut the duty periods in our middle schools. Your responsibility as school board members is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of every child in this district. You have abandoned that duty. You have children running amok in our schools, disrupting classes, terrorizing 10-year-old fifth graders who do not belong in those middle schools. You people need a life lesson in child development, and you sorely need it now. You don't know squat about the development of a child, or you wouldn't put a 10-year-old child in this building that used to be Scranton Technical High School, which was built for senior high school boys and girls. They were men and women when they left those buildings. And you put a 10-year-old in there with eighth-grade kids? Shame on you. Shame on you. A few weeks ago, you lost a six-year-old child. A six-year-old child! You are responsible for that child until that child gets home, and you did not have the common decency to call that mom and sit down with her and tell her everything's going to be all right. We're going to find your child. Shame on you! If a teacher was missing a child, every administrator in this district would write up that teacher in a minute for negligent supervision. I accuse you of negligent supervision. And as far as this law nonsense that you're talking about today, baloney, law, my foot. What happened in Lake Lehman? Did you cut that health care down in Lehman when they went out? You did not. Did they cut it at all for when they went out? You did not! But I had a teacher call me two minutes ago. She's in the hospital. She went down to her doctor's office in Lehigh Valley. Her blood levels went skyrocketing. They thought she was in a stroke. Shame on you! People up there have had cancer... I know what time it is. It's union time! It's union time! You want to know about this union? There they are! There's your union. You want to join it? There they are.
Thank you, Rosemary. Our next speaker is Suzanne Gallo. Suzanne Gallo? Suzanne Gallo? Suzanne Gallo?
Good evening. I am Suzanne Gallo, first-grade teacher at Neil Armstrong Elementary and proud member of the SFT. You have portrayed yourself as being outraged. We've heard that word quite a bit. Let me tell you a little bit more about why the teachers are outraged. First of all, who in the world cuts health care during a pandemic? The true colors of this district were displayed tonight. Okay, what else? We knew when libraries, when we were told that there were no libraries in a public school where we're teaching children how to read, we knew. My heart sunk because I knew that if you felt that we didn't need libraries and librarians, where are we going? No place but down. At that same time, you cut maintenance, you cut clerical, you've cut art programs, you've cut music programs. Have you looked at the bands at West Scranton and Scranton High? You have disseminated the bands. And we said that if you cut the music programs, there would be no bands. We're almost there. We're almost there. You have reduced the numbers of graduation credits. You have reduced social studies and math. You've cut family and consumer sciences. You've cut industrial arts. You've closed buildings during a pandemic. You've overcrowded our classrooms. When every other school district is reducing class sizes, what are we doing? The opposite. The opposite. You've shut off the water in our buildings. I still can't even wash my hands in my own building, classroom, during a pandemic. At Armstrong, we don't have ventilation in our cold lunchroom, so our gym is not accessible because it has to be for the cold lunch. So our gym teacher is teaching on the sidewalk, in the hallway. What a disservice to our children. What a disservice. You've allowed mold to grow in our building for three or four years before it's finally been addressed. You've allowed students to sit in classrooms that are 90-plus degrees. You've cut three-year-old preschool. You've cut four-year-old preschool. Opposite of the research. You've allowed the asbestos to be in our buildings for so long before it was finally dealt with. You've shoved our fifth-grade students into middle school. They're not ready for that. You've continued to create positions and given raises to administration. But what have we gotten? Nothing. To correct historical mistakes. You've caused the mass exodus of teachers. And now every district in this area is benefiting from all the experience from all those teachers. You've indicated that there would be more support for us. We've gotten less. There's not one extra resource we've had. You've done this.
Suzanne, please wrap up.
I will. This is not our fault. This is the historical mistake. And it is shameful. And it's on you, not us. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Kelly Butler.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Butler, a taxpayer, teacher and proud union member. Please note that I'm currently on the bum step. Please note, I'm under my husband's healthcare insurance. He works at a district 20 miles away and he does not pay for his Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. He gets paid for his coverages. He is reimbursed for taking nine college credits a year and then moves up the pay scale for doing so. And the starting salary at his school district is $55,000. The board and administration would like to paint a beautiful picture of how things are going in the district to the public, but the reality is quite different from what the picture that they portray. What we hear is we care about our students. If you truly cared about the students, you wouldn't have eliminated librarians, paras, eliminated guidance counselors at the elementary level, decimated the related arts at the middle school level, lowered graduation requirements, eliminated preschool, closed neighborhood schools, and eliminated busing. Just look at our two high school marching bands and say, "We care about our students." Kudos to the students that have taught themselves how to play instruments and the parents that have spent their own money on private lessons. Next week, we are moving special ed students, teachers, to different classrooms because they aren't at max capacity with their caseloads. As soon as all the MTSS studies are completed, we'll need them back. Some of our special education students have missed five quarters of school and instead of giving those students more resources, you're only worried about maxing out each classroom. You can't say you care about our students when you took away our special education paraprofessional positions that have been eliminated. Our students have less support than they did in the past. What we hear is we don't have any money. You should say, "You don't have any money for us." You have money for historical corrections at the rate you are. If you didn't have money, you wouldn't be able to afford our solicitor's hefty salary. If you didn't have money, you wouldn't have wasted money on frontline to fill positions when you continue to promote people from within or hire relatives of people in the district. If you didn't have money, you wouldn't have just voted to make upgrades to Memorial Stadium and West Granton Intermediate School. If you didn't have money, you wouldn't be creating a STEM program. A STEM program would be great, but it certainly isn't necessary today. What we hear is the union is allowing their members to approve the current offer. The reality is, we want what we currently have and aren't interested in accepting your joke of a healthcare plan, cutting jobs for our colleagues by teaching the sixth period or working overtime and not getting compensated for it because you can't get subs. We aren't asking for raises. We currently have a pay scale and teachers just want what is owed them. And you have an unpaid bill and we're ready for you to pay it.
Kelly, please wrap up.
In the past, I described the Scranton School District as being a sinking ship. I need to change my statement and now say, "The Scranton School District is on fire and no one is coming to our rescue."
Thank you, Kelly. Amy Sheridan Lloyd.
Good evening. Put my mask on, sorry. I'm a taxpayer, a teacher, a proud SFT member and a parent of a junior at West Granton High School. I've been teaching for 25 years, 21 of those years as a librarian, until I was told I am no longer academically necessary. I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis in 2007. I have an infusion that I take once a month. And my doctor in New York City does not take ELAP. I want my healthcare. And I have more to say, but I can't thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Dawn Haefner.
Salutations. Is everyone on texting and working on the computer? My name is Dawn Haefner. I'm a taxpayer. I am a proud mom of two Scranton School District students. I'm a proud member of the SFT 1147 and I'm currently a sixth-grade math teacher at South Scranton Intermediate School. I do want to say someone had mentioned textbooks. I got mine Friday. And then my next thing is, I was wondering if any of my equity inequity issues were addressed when I spoke at the last board meeting? I didn't know if I missed something. No, okay. Anyway, so I'm here this evening to speak about the safety issues at South and I'm sure the other middle schools as well, but I'm not there, so I'll just speak for South. I am outraged that this board continues to mislead the public and parents that everything is fine. It's fine. I am outraged at... Whoops, sorry. Everything is fine. Where was I? I lost my place. I am outraged that they continue to mislead the public and that the lack of supervision in the halls and the stairways since our duty has been eliminated is... Thank you. The stairways are where the fights start. We had a huge fight at South. There's also, I am outraged at the fact that students cannot walk home from school without being jumped by 15 other students. That occurred on Friday. The mom was there with her daughter as two other parents tried to pull the 15 people off the girl and her little sister was hyperventilating. So that occurred. I am outraged that the water situation is ridiculous. There is a continual wet floor all while students roam from floor to floor searching for cups, all while missing out on instruction because God forbid we tell them they can't stroll for a drink. Do you have any idea how much money the endless five-gallon bottles and plastic cups are costing the district? I'd say nada. I am outraged over all the students carrying backpacks that one cannot see through. Too many students in the upper grades don't follow your policy of the backpacks being clear or mesh and the uniform policy that myself and a few colleagues had to take the initiative and post all over the school. If the teachers address this issue, then we are told we're over the top. And we've been told that. So I'm also outraged that the speakers and phones are still not working or cease to exist. Actually, on Thursday, October 21st, we ran a severe weather drill. I had my class in front of me and I was teaching. And then I saw Mr. Kevin Carney in my doorway. He was just looking at me. So I asked him if the mumbling in the hallway was the weather drill. He informed me that it was. I then proceeded to remove my students...
Dawn, please wrap up.
I have like three sentences. "To remove my students from the class to the hallway." I told Mr. Carney that my request has been in both the DUD and IT since I'm not sure where the problem lies. I didn't realize that when I requested for it to be mounted, I was supposed to request for it to work. I am outraged at the most basic things that you boast about are actually the basic necessities in a school, yet you continue to take and take and take some more.
Thank you, Dawn. Jane Alicia.
Good evening. My name is Jane Alicia. I am a Scranton homeowner, a business owner, a taxpayer, a former substitute teacher for the district, and both of my children attend the elementary and now middle school. I am here to speak tonight about two very important topics, the condition of our buildings and our teachers. I was made aware just last week that the auditorium at Northeast Intermediate is closed due to a ceiling collapse. From my understanding, a contractor assessed the damage over the summer and yet it is now November 1st and nothing has been fixed. The auditorium is the only place in that building that is big enough to allow our students to attend gatherings, house assemblies and hold specific events like breakfast for our veterans, all of which can no longer be done because it's closed. The principal has sent several emails asking for a plan, looking for a timeline, but yet no response. So I'm asking our board members, what is the status? When is it getting fixed? We want specifics. You have the money to make the necessary repairs, so please do it. Last, our wonderful teachers. Scranton is filled with incredibly wonderful educators that truly love and care for their students. Why can they not be provided with a fair contract? Why does it have to come down to a strike? Both of my students spent the last 18 months in front of a computer and just when things start to get back to normal, you take it away. Our teachers put everything into their classrooms and their students. This is their livelihood. Teaching is their passion. Today, while scrolling through Facebook, I came across a support page for the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. They shared an extremely, extremely meaningful post that read, "Our educators' working conditions are our students' learning conditions." And I felt that each and every one of you needed to hear that. I am urging this board, "Sit down with our teachers, give them a fair contract." Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Kathleen Beckwith.
Good evening. Kathleen Beckwith, Scranton resident, mother of two children who attended SSD three-year-old preschool through to their graduation of West High School. Taxpayer and proud SFT member. I am outraged at the misleading information and half-truths publicized by this board. We've never negotiated in the public before, but this board has decided to do that without truly explaining the negative effects of some proposed changes. One proposed change in particular is teaching a sixth period. Why is the SFT not willing to take a sixth period at the middle school and high school level? One, it would be a loss of 82 jobs. 82 teachers we can't afford to lose and would result in larger class sizes. Larger classrooms result in less individualized attention from the teacher. Larger classrooms can lend themselves to a more disruptive environment because there are more students to manage. Larger classrooms mean less participation by students in group discussions. So I ask, what is the benefit for students? Number two, it would eliminate our prep period. Why is this significant? This is the only time in my workday that I can prepare for my lessons, communicate with parents, talk with my administrator, collaborate with my colleagues and go to the bathroom. That is, if I'm not covering a class due to the shortage of substitutes. So how does this benefit my students? Number three, it's a serious safety issue. Since the middle schools have already lost the duty periods, we now see the consequences of this action. Lack of teacher visibility has created serious safety hazards. There is very little supervision in the halls. Because teachers are in their classrooms, they cannot monitor both the students in front of them and the nonsense in the halls. So how is this safe for our students? No teacher wants to go on strike, but we have been given no choice. You have stated that you are outraged by the strike action announced by the SFT and that you are gravely concerned about its impact on students and their families, only now readjusting to normal school life after so many months out of classroom due to the pandemic. So I ask, where was your concern when you closed Bancroft? Where was your concern when you eliminated preschool? Where was your concern when you refused to publicly respond to the family whose child was lost on the first day of school when they were speaking in front of you? Where was your concern for the taxpayers when you handed out historical salary corrections? Where was your concern for the local business owners who employ many of our students and families when you voted against their pleas for the payroll tax? So again, I ask, where is your concern for our students and families? You should be outraged by the cuts of the so-called recovery plan and asking, "How does it benefit the students of this district?" Not pointing fingers at the teachers and paraprofessionals who have been fighting for our students.
Thank you, Kathleen. Jonathan Nasco. Not positive I got the last name right. Excuse me.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board. My name's Jonathan Nasco. I am a student at West Scranton High. I am... Thank you. I am president of the West Scranton Marching Invaders. We... We are hurting due to your guys' decisions with cutting music, arts, libraries. Now, I'm not only here to fight for the music. No. You guys have taken a lot away from us kids. You really have. You've hurt a lot of kids. Music is my escape. That's how I escape from all my things. How are those kids, from eighth grade right now, down, supposed to have that escape if you take those things away from them? Tell me, please! Now, I came in front of you guys before. January 23rd, 2019, with a petition signed over 800 people and you guys still was too blind to see your guys' mistakes. And Gil Martin, Ms. Gil Martin, you've made a statement on that day to the news stating, "And I will have, I have the proof right here." "I done my research." Ready? "I am prepared to entertain anything. I hope there are some very creative solutions." Now, this was 2019. We are in the ending of 2021. What have you done? You have done nothing right! Literally! Now, if I'm not mistaken, you were spending $3 million on redoing our bleachers, correct? In the stadium, if I'm correct? Now, no offense, like soccer team, both of our soccer teams are amazing up at West. Scranton High too. Right? Now, I'm not going to sit here because I'm in West. I'm not going to defend West only. No. I'm defending the Scranton School District. That's what I'm doing. Now, a statement made on... Again, I got more. Statement made by somebody on the meeting discussing about the track and field of that shenanigans. October 25th, a statement was said by a gentleman. "After the stadium is finished, it will be the crown jewel of northeastern PA." Thank you. What will it be when football games are at home, right? And we have marching bands like Wall &amp; Paul Peck, Holmesdale, North Pocono, Valley View. Thank you. They're expecting to see our marching bands, right? How are they supposed to see that if there's none? Our marching band, West Granton Marching Band, has 20 people.
Jonathan, please wrap up.
I will. One more sentence. Well, two, actually. Two more. I will. One more sentence. Well, two, actually, two more. Thirty seconds, I'll need. Is, West Scranton Marching Band has ninety percent juniors right now. And you guys have gave us no options to help and find a way to fix the music, arts, and library. You have not gave us any options to do any fundraisers, anything. And you guys say you've done to the extent you haven't. And I have one other thing.
Jonathan, please wrap up.
I will, right after this one sentence, ma'am. Who wants them back in office? There you go.
Thank you, Jonathan. Michelle Borthwick.
Well said, Jonathan.
Good evening. I speak to you tonight as a parent, taxpayer, product of the Scranton School District, and a proud member of the SFT. I've had the privilege of teaching seventh grade English at West Scranton Intermediate for nine years now. In that time, I have seen student programs decimated. My current students have no idea that only a few years ago they would have had the opportunity to take band, strings, chorus, French, German, computers, woodshop, health, swim, library, and planetarium classes. Taking so much away from our students is wrong. Teaching well requires creativity and careful planning. It demands timely feedback, thoughtful reflection, communication, collaboration, compassion. These things take time, time which our middle school teachers especially no longer have. Intermediate teachers have forty-five fewer minutes per day to do all of this because of the aforementioned program cuts. Our time is further limited as we cover for classes without substitutes multiple times per week. How are teachers supposed to maintain a well-run learning environment when our time is not protected as the valuable resource that it is? The sixth-class period and unpage coverage proposed in your contract only exacerbates this problem. As I've experienced my job become less and less sustainable, I have also watched central administration and school directors treat teachers dismissively and disrespectfully. Like so many others, I am realizing that the only logical solution to the problems I routinely face is going to be to leave this district. And that breaks my heart because I love my students. I love seeing them grow as writers and thinkers and learners. I am privileged to witness them become more confident, mature human beings. And I am so lucky to serve the community I live in. I'll say it again, I love working with my students, but I do not love this job. I do not love working in a district that continues to take opportunities away from students. I do not love working in a district where every level of staff member from teachers to parish to clerical staff to building principals struggle to keep their heads above water because staff has been cut or not replaced, and our tight time schedule leaves no margin for error. I do not love working in an environment that throws initiatives at teachers seemingly without careful thought and most certainly without providing adequate training or time to actually learn and implement those initiatives. I do not love working in a district so toxic, the hatred toward teachers coming from this group of people is palpable. I don't deny the Scranton School District faces hard times, but even in hard times, good leaders provide support. Good leaders work to correct toxic work environments and build trust. They openly and honestly communicate, seek feedback, and value the input they receive. None of this is happening at the Scranton School District. Teachers are not listened to, respected, or valued in any meaningful way, creating abysmally low morale. As a classroom teacher, I am responsible for creating an environment in which my students feel seen, heard, supported, and respected. As district leaders, you are responsible for creating that same environment for your staff, so own up. Take responsibility. None of you sitting before me is helpless. All of you have the ability to reflect, grow, change, and do better. One sentence. So do better. Start to repair the damage. Your attitudes, your words, and your actions matter. Thank you.
Jason Batchor.
Good evening. My name is Jason Batchor. I'm a product of the Scranton School District. This is my nineteenth year teaching, but I am on salary step fourteen, which means a cost savings to this district, myself alone, of more than eighty thousand dollars. The last five years of your board meeting votes and failed negotiation sessions have been traumatic and have greatly impacted the financial stability of my family. Mr. Audi, a five, fifteen hundred dollar signing bonus offered to any of the hundred and ninety people on the bump step is an insult, an insult to my intelligence and my expertise. It is not easy to stand up here in front of you until I receive the letter from Mr. Katrovinsky, Mr. Laughey, signed by Ms. McTirrenan, Mr. Dr. Finan, Mr. Audi, Ms. Gil Martin, and Mr. Malloy to suspend our health insurance during a pandemic. It's much easier now. You have put the blame solely on the teachers. You're kidding me. If we do strike, you all have responsibility in that. And I'm sure, after all the public speaking is over tonight, you will make and set the record straight but not allow anybody else to speak. The whole truth must be told. The truth is, teachers have not received any of the millions of dollars in COVID money, any of it, nor do we want it. That belongs to the students. The students are the priority. They are supposed to be what you are doing and what you are here for. Those funds should not have gone to historical corrections or administrative raises. You should not spend millions on bleachers and renting sports fields overpaying teachers for the work that we already did. All new student program has to be learned, delivered by the teachers, not you, meaning more and more on us. The public should know, teachers are not given health insurance. We pay for our quality health insurance. ELAP is not insurance. Look it up. ELAP is a service in which many don't even know about or won't deal with. Taxpayers, the district says it has no money. You paid your taxes. Where'd it go? Administrators making six figures received increases. Teachers have not received the millions when preschools were eliminated, when library music programs were taken away, when school buildings were closed for most of last year, and when this board voted to close bankrupt. The truth remains, the recovery officer refuses to amend the recovery plan to include any of those savings along with the millions of additional state funding. Meeting after meeting, this board has voted with the recommendations of the superintendent over the teachers. We are the ones in the classroom. The needed resources of students and families shouldn't be ignored. You are listening to the wrong people, the wrong voices. This district needs problem solvers, and if those in charge aren't getting it done, then changes need to be made.
Thank you, Jason. Christine Walker.
Hello. My name is Christine Walker. I'm a product of the Scranton Schools, a city resident, taxpayer, and a proud member of the SFT. There has been much talk about the use of ESER funds, and this administration has touted how it's now able to purchase books for the students in the Scranton School District: math, ELA, social studies, elementary through high school. To many, to many, this sounds wonderful. Years and years of outdated or non-existent textbook, yet I don't see this as a major accomplishment. After all, aren't textbooks a most basic and fundamental requirement of a school district? In addition, the ELA books that were purchased are consumables. So when the ESER funds expire in three years, how can the district sustain this purchase? So what have teachers done all these years without of date or, in the case of English, non-existent textbooks or workbooks at all? We haven't stopped teaching while we wait year after year. Instead, we found our own materials, we've created our own lessons and activities, we've collaborated with fellow teachers, and we do what we do best. We teach. We haven't had textbooks, and it's also common knowledge that we don't get the most basic supplies either, from pencils or highlighters, lined papers, folders, I can go on. A few years ago, a few years ago, the district even stopped providing planners for our students, an item which was extremely helpful as a communication tool with parents and a way to help students stay and get organized. So without textbooks or basic supplies, the district basically provides teachers with a room. At South Intermediate, many of our classrooms are without working or audible speakers. Many are still waiting for phones to be put in classroom, which again is a huge safety issue. I have an antiquated Promethean board that is no longer supported, and the pens no longer work. All of these issues have been reported in school due and reported to our principal since last March when we returned. Still, they are not taken care of. I'm reminded of everything that this district does not provide for its teachers and students every time a new hire comes to our building and looks for supplies or materials or furniture. I forget that most districts do provide these essentials, but to the teachers and students in the SSD, these seem like a luxury. Imagine textbooks and paper, a luxury. That being said, I am outraged that of the few things this district does provide, they are now threatening to take away. Many luxuries, I suppose you think they are? I'm outraged that this board presents its teachers as greedy because middle school and high school teachers are fighting to keep that sixth-period prep period, that prep period we so desperately need. I am outraged that the board wants teachers and paraprofessionals to be perceived as unreasonable because they wish to continue their current health care, a health care that we pay for. I'm outraged and have been outraged for everything our students, I know, have lost and will continue to lose under this recovery plan. I am outraged, outraged that because of this board's actions, it continues to lose its most valuable resource, its teachers and its paraprofessionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Mead.
Hi. I've heard a lot of anger tonight, but I would rather have some answers to some questions. Mr. Audi, as an attorney, you know the law is to be interpreted. Are you sure you're interpreting it correctly? Or did you twist it to fit your own vendetta against the SFT? Is the law, is the law that controls the strike in Abington different than the law that governs the strikes in Scranton? If revoking our health care was meant to break the union, it seems to have produced the opposite effect. Is it legal to cut our health care? I'm sure it is, but what this board needs to ask itself, is it ethical or moral to cut our health care? When you have a phenomenal teacher like Amy Lloyd, fourth-grade phenomenal teacher, stand up here crying, that's shameful. During New Business, one of the directors needs to bring this up and present a motion to prevent cutting our health care. Mr. Audi does not run the Scranton School District.
Ladies and gentlemen, please let Mrs. Mead finish her comments. Mrs. Mead, would you like to continue?
Yes. Mr. Audi does not run the Scranton School District. The nine of you do. If you make a motion and vote on it, the district does what you say, not what he says. We want to settle this contract, but we need you all to stop hiding behind policies and your board president. The board makes the decisions. You don't have to take Mr. Audi's advice. You don't have to take Dr. Finan's advice. You have proven that you don't always take Dr. Finan's advice, and you don't always follow the recovery plan. When you did not raise taxes, even though in the recovery plan, it states you're supposed to raise taxes each year while you're in recovery, but maybe you didn't want to raise those taxes during election season, or maybe, or maybe you wanted to actually give the taxpayers of Scranton a break. Either way, you used your common sense judgment and made that decision. You need to start doing the same thing right now. We are in the education profession for a reason. We are here to help students. It's a helping profession. We are a group of helpers. Each time I come here, I've repeatedly told you that you, the respect that the teachers want and need to settle this contract. As I tell my students every day.
Holly, please wrap up.
You need to show, you need to show me how you respect someone else, and you need to show me with your actions, not just your words. You all need to show us how you're helping us to settle this contract, not prevent it from being settled. I'm waiting for each one of you to show me with your actions, not just placate me month after month with the same words.
Thank you, Holly. Gus Fahey.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Gus. Go ahead.
My name is Gus Fahey. I'm a community member, a community representative of the Financial Recovery Advisory Committee. And some of you may know that I'm an advocate of neighborhood schools, so that's, that's really important, something I'm advocating for. I feel like part of the, I'm really inspired by the teacher who said that we all need to work together in order to solve this problem. And I think that the reason that we're in recovery in the first place is because we had successive years where our expenses exceeded our income. And that's one of the reasons cited, that the state taking over our system and putting us under recovery. And so when I'm trying to advocate for, for neighborhood schools, it's important for me that what I suggest is grounded in that math, that there's trade-offs that we have to make when we come to these very difficult decisions.
Ladies and gentlemen, please let Mr. Fahey finish his comments.
Thank you, Katie, but I'm, I'm willing, I do want this to be a conversation, so I don't mind that feedback. And so for the teacher's contract that we all need to see and that we want to see, I think it's all of our responsibilities to say, how are we going to have a contract that fits within something that the recovery officer is going to accept? Our expenses cannot include our... Yeah, I have two children, thank you. Nine and eleven. Yes. Howard Gardner.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fahey has the floor. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fahey has the floor. Everyone who spoke this evening was given the respect to bring their comments forward. Please show him the same.
So, so my, my suggestion is that if we don't like recovery, the biggest thing that's preventing us from exiting recovery is an agreement on the teacher's contract. That our, the, 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 the Scranton School District budget, three-quarters of that is salaries and benefits. And of course, the... So if we, if we have an interest.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fahey has three minutes to speak. Please allow him.
If we have an interest in exiting recovery, then we need to work together in order to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Jennifer Felter. Jennifer Felter?
Good evening, everyone. I believe I'm the last speaker, no? Last speaker? Cool, I'm going to close this out. All right. Check, check. I'm a singer too, so shout out to all of the fine arts educators out there. You deal with a lot of stuff, and so does everyone else. I am a proud alumni of Delaware Valley 2001, Candy Finan. All right? And I have a master's degree in art education. This is my 14th year teaching in Scranton School District. And like all of you, I love my students. And you do too. You are fantastic, and we're gonna get through this because we're gonna fight. That's right. Today, in school, our last day together, my little kindergartner says, "Ms. Jenny, why do all the mean rich people not want us to come to school?" I didn't know what to say, so I just said, "Okay, let's keep painting." "Ms. Jenny, I want to go to school." These are the kids that you're depriving, not just us. These little tiny things, do you care? No. This is our city. Education is everything, everything. These people are going to be operating on our brains one day. They are going to be taking care of us in retirement homes when we can barely walk. The school has gut-cutting psychologists, and these kids are dealing with such trauma, and it's unthinkable what they are dealing with. And still, our kids are strong. You can't be weak and exist here, which is really sad because it's becoming the survival of the fittest around here, and that is not equitable. So I'm going to say it, well, I said it once at my last speech, and I'm going to say it again. You don't care about our kids. You have no soul. What time is it? It's union time, baby!
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. Public comment has concluded. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 13th, 2021, October 4th, 2021, and October 25th, 2021? May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Well. That's fine. Are we voting? Sorry, yes, I could not hear.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni? Mrs. Yanni? Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
Jenny, are you, you have it?
Yes.
Thank you. On the question of the consent agenda? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
I have to assume... Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
Thank you. Pardon me while I pull up, I believe we are moving to Operations Motion E5. E5, we will have a motion to award the HVAC services contract with Scranton Electric. The financial impact is $63.99 per hour with an 18% markup for parts. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
This is the, this is the contract we discussed at the work session.
Yes.
President Gil Martin, that we discussed all the figures and everything. The board is completely informed about this.
Director Hume, you need to speak into the microphone. We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
This is the contract we discussed at the work session, and the board is completely informed of all the conditions thereon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
F1, a motion to approve the personnel report as attached. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
On the question?
On behalf of my colleagues, I thank those who are leaving us for their years of service to the district and congratulate the new hires and appointees. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
Motion F2, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, the memorandum of agreement between SSD and SFT for instruction in the home teachers-related service providers.
So moved.
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
Motion G2, a motion to approve first read for policy 123, interscholastic athletics. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question?
On the question, I am not in favor of creating policy or modifying current policy to account for a work stoppage or strike, especially as it relates to our students and their extracurricular activities. I am of the opinion that the union leadership is responsible for the continuation of teacher-led student activities. If SFT's leadership will allow their members to cross the picket line to coach and supervise student activities, then I see no reason to cancel or suspend our clubs and athletics during the strike.
On the question, Mr. Castrovinci, did you ever receive a response to the email you sent to the SFT leadership on Friday, I believe it was?
No, I did not receive a response to that message. No.
Thank you.
And what was the message?
I asked Mrs. Boland and copied Matt Loftus and asked them if the district could continue with all activities and sports programs.
And you've not yet received a response?
No, I have not received a response to date, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Per our last meeting, I don't know if we can suggest a friendly amendment. I do agree with you, Michelle, and I was actually just reading it from the last strike in 2015, and my assumption is that the stance will be similar to that, where no teachers were allowed to cross the picket line to coach or such. So last meeting, we were talking about it being at the discretion of administration as long as it can be carried out safely and equitably. So the friendly amendment, if the board agrees, would read something that, it says it will be discontinued immediately at the time of the work stoppage, but we would add may be continued at the discretion of the administration if such can be carried out safely and equitably.
I'm sorry, Director Fox, I wonder would you mind repeating that perhaps about your mask? Because I honestly could not understand what you're saying.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer? Sorry. "May be continued at the discretion of the administration if such can be carried out safely and equitably," like we spoke about last meeting. So that would be just a friendly amendment to the policy.
On the question, I'm, I mean, I said it last week, I'm not in favor of this. I think we should, I mean, this is a tough time for our kids after coming off a year and a half they had. This strike is not their fault at all. So what we need to do is make sure we can do whatever we can to have every activity, you know, still run, whether it's sports, non-sports, whatever it is. We have to do our best. We owe it to them. So I'm not in favor for any policy for that.
On the question, I totally, sorry.
Pardon me, we are conducting a business meeting. We have had our time for public comment. Pardon me! We are conducting a business meeting. Public comment is closed. Please take your seat. Please take your seat. Public comment is closed.
Director McAndrew, in response to what you were saying, I totally agree. The last thing I want to see is the strike taking away anything more from our children than their education. But I do not believe that we can have extracurricular activities for some students and not for all students. I do not believe it is fair to discriminate between the football team and the Knights. Excuse me, I'm...
Ladies and gentlemen, public comment is closed. We are having a discussion on the, we are having a discussion on a policy that is the work of the school board. Public comment is closed.
Can I just keep, I'm just...
Public comment is closed. I'm sorry, public comment is closed. Please submit your question to the secretary.
Pardon, I would just continue.
No, we do not. Public comment is closed. Please take your question to the secretary, and we will address it after the meeting. Thank you.
I just really feel, I just really feel that it needs to be equitable, and I do not particularly, I do feel that, as we have heard a great deal, and indeed, I personally have listened to and absorbed a great deal of what was said in public comment, I do feel now I would like to continue my discussion with my colleague.
Please.
I totally want to see the kids continue their extracurricular activities, but I believe it is totally a question of equity. I am concerned about if there are members of the SFT who have no wish to cross the picket line and continue their coaching duties in, or their, I don't know what you'd call it, debate coach, a choir master, I guess. We have to be assured of all of their safety, particularly in the sporting activities as well. I think that we have, this is a very complex question. Unless we can find a way, unless the SFT members, the SFT is prepared to allow its members to continue with their coaching duties on a no-harm, no-foul basis, I don't know how we deal with that, Director McAndrew. I'm really at a loss.
Well, I think if the strike goes through, you know, we post it. We put it out there, and we try to see who can step up in the community, and we, you know, if Activity A can have somebody fill in right away, and if Activity B can't, we start Activity A, but we continue to try to find something to do Activity B. I just, I don't want to wipe it out for everybody.
But how can we, how can we do that? How can we do that in the time, in the initial time? Tomorrow, every is election day? I mean, I'm all for that, but I do not believe we can start any of the activities until we have all of them staffed. It's not fair. It's not fair. Why should, why should...
I think, Director Hume, I think we should consider the friendly amendment because I think that accomplishes what we are all trying to accomplish here.
Indeed. I apologize for getting distracted. I did not hear the friendly amendment. I would ask Director Fox, perhaps, I apologize.
Would you reread that, please?
So we'll be discontinued immediately at the time of the work stoppage, but...
Director Fox, I'm sorry.
We would add, "may be continued at the discretion of the administration if such can be carried out safely and equitably."
Just, I'm sorry. Would you like, would you like me to read that back? Pull your mask down. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. We are, it is being proposed that the friendly amendment would strike out the language, "will be discontinued immediately at the time of the work stoppage," and it would be replaced with, "may be continued at the discretion of administration if such can be carried out safely and equitably." I think by considering that amendment, we memorialize this so that another, God forbid, situation such as this should arise. We know where the decision lies, where the responsibility is. I think it opens up the potential for the administration and the union to discuss this and come to a positive resolution for our students. And I think it also addresses the concerns that obviously the effort is to do everything for everyone, and that would be at the discretion of the administration.
And that sounds very equitable if the, that sounds extraordinarily equitable, and I...
Pardon me, one second, please, Rosemary. Director Hume? That's wonderful. Could I, thank you, Rosemary, that, I'm very pleased to hear that. Could I ask you to let Mr. Castrovinci know so that planning can commence?
Does that include extracurriculars?
Thank you. Does it include all extracurriculars? I do think there's a concern about drama, speech and debate, other extracurriculars. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Director Hume?
That is very gracious, Ms. Boland, and thank you very much indeed. It's been a concern of all of us that the children would leave even more, but I support the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Are we comfortable with the friendly amendment as proposed by Director Fox?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask Superintendent McTernan, does that give you the directive that you would need then to proceed forward?
Yes, it does. And now that I know. I was a little concerned about the language that was being used because the word equitable was in there, and there was some concern about I would try to move forward. Obviously, we don't have that concern now because Ms. Boland already addressed that. But the language still, if Ms. Boland did not say that, then I was going to say the language I am concerned about, that it's not very clear. So, you know, if you want to give the discretion of the administration, then that's fine. But if you're going to tell me that it needs to be equitable, and it was, you know, again, we're talking about hypothetical here because we already have our answer, well, then you need to tell me it needs to be, you need to, you would need to be able to give me time to get people in positions because I wouldn't, I might not be able to make it equitable on day one. And I think that's what I said the last meeting. So I think we just need to decide, we're doing it, we're not doing it, or it's administration, or the board's making a decision. I think you've, to me, it's not very clear for me.
Would you be comfortable if we did this amendment as this is a first-read policy?
Yeah, I think we've gotten our answer tonight.
And then brought it back to clarify the language. I think we're setting our intention this evening now, and we'll make sure the language is...
Yeah, I just think it needs to be very clear as to exactly what the board wants, and I will follow exactly what the board wants, and to me, that language was not very clear.
Okay. So we will have a, we have a friendly amendment on the floor.
I just need a second.
We need a second.
I'll second it.
On the question of the friendly amendment? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
And on the question of the original motion, I would just say we will continue to clarify this language. I also believe that the same, once we have hammered out that specific language, I believe the same language needs to be inserted into policy 122, which governs extracurricular activities. Anyone else on the question?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.
A affirmative.
G3, a motion to approve first-read policy 706, property records. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. So moved.
Someone very quietly, motion.
Oh, that was me.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes. I4. We will have a motion to approve marketing options attached to offset athletic training service costs in the amount of $28,000. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. And I'm just wondering if we could add to that that it's with Geisinger Health Plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think it just needs to be added into that motion.
So I think we would need... It is not on the motion. I thought maybe I didn't read the rest of it. So do we need a friendly amendment to... What's the word I'm looking for? Verify, acknowledge?
To add it, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So I need a second on the original motion.
I'll second.
Right. Then Director Yanni, you are making the friendly amendment to add with...
Right, to approve the proposed marketing options with Geisinger Health Plan as attached for the value of $28,000.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? On the question of the motion?
On the question, I'm just going to say I will be abstaining from the vote as I work for another healthcare provider in the area.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Abstain.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Yes.